Lenny?
Yeah.
Okay.
There could be our problem.
Alright.
Listen, you can teach me, we can teach you.
Yes.
Real, I'm real hateful, I'm hateful, I'm like... So, picture this, it's a power link, do I put that on? That one? My gift? Behind this? Not that one, no? The whole thing hasn't started, oh, hasn't started. I don't think you ever tell me, I never have that, I never got that. Will you send me the link?
Yep, I'll do it right now.
You want to go back into our work?
Yep, give me a second. Did it show up yet?
No.
So it's on your panel?
You have it? It's on.
Yes, Claire.
Can you get in? We're out. Hold on.
What do you declare? Oh, hang on, hang on. Did Wendy send it to you? Because I'm on, but no one else is. Okay, I'll, I will re... It's all, yeah, give me a second, I will resend it right to you. Thought you brought that, that is password. Ah, connected? This has different access code. 97. Fred, for the meeting number? Did it ask for a meeting number?
Yeah, if you break me, I'm not blessed. Yeah, that?
For me? Okay, how do I screen this? They're saying that, uh, the meeting has started yet. I know, and I just, it's been started for 10 minutes. I think it's the wrong meeting number. Because the, I'm looking at the information on the bar here, it says meeting number 797-700-041. So what do we do? Janso also? I know, I just sent out another one, but I have to log out of this. Or, you know what? I'm just going to send out the new access code to everyone. Okay, yeah. Alright? Yeah. Okay, bye. I have no idea. My first time doing this, I did what?
I know.
He told me to sign on as.
Is this, uh, you want to call Lenny? If we remember?
If we call Lenny, you tell me then, instead of the 132 meeting that start, started with that? Uh, let's see. Okay. Joe's in, Wendy's in, Fred's in.
But Margaret?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned, because this number just went out at 350, 356.
Joe, fortunately Dave's... And this is the information that popped up. When he had me logged on with his information, so...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
We can't try to get that information out.
But we have to see if people can come, I mean... I, I, I'm not comfortable having a meeting when this went out at 356. And Freddie, before we start, quick question. You added that resolution for Anthony, correct?
That's on, yes.
Yeah, it's for 4,500, I was told it was 5,000, are we sure the number's correct?
No, it's, it's in the budget at 45 as budgeted.
As long as it is what it is, I mean, because somebody sent me a text.
I, I was probably incorrect, the budget number was 4500.
Okay, as long as that's what it is.
Yep, that's right. Yeah, but it's a problem with the number, the code change. There's also a problem here this afternoon with Microsoft, so just, and Margaret will drop the number. Because we're getting, coming in like one, I'm in, Joe's in, Wendy's in, but it's been... The number changed, the number changed, and Dave...
I just said that to Sean, Rob, Adam, Rich.
One second, one second, one, one second.
Claire? Oh, go to B... Um, go to webex.com. And then you're gonna go to the right-hand side, it says join. W-E-B-E-X.
I have no idea what that is. Feedback coming from somebody's...
Hey, Lenny? Hold on, okay, okay, alright, hold on. Says the meeting is locked, I don't know how the meeting is locked, because I haven't locked anything.
You're talking, it's coming through my computer.
Okay. Alright, let me try again. No, yes, please, thank you. I'm...
Some feedback. Hi, Paul.
I love that it was a little spot.
How do I mute myself?
Oh, this, this is Mike Guerriero. Hello?
Hi, Mike, we hear you.
Okay, I, I dial a number like five times, I couldn't get in.
Margaret, what's the phone number people says they're calling on, and dial the access code into?
8? 418?
So, area code 408, 418, 9388?
Yes. And they just, it's just 700-041.
Margaret, this is Mike Guerriero. The, the numbers that I heard originally?
I, oh, Mike, I'm fine.
Okay, yeah, because, alright, so it's a 797-700-041. Okay, alright, thank you, because I just got, got some people... Yes, I'm gonna stay right where I am.
Okay, thank you.
Not boring.
Alright, thank you, Margaret.
Those, those of you who are not aware...
Margaret, I can hear you talking.
I think it's... Lenny?
Yes, unbelievably.
Alright, Lenny, loud and clear.
And somehow the number changed, so just hold, we're coming in slow.
So, Margaret? Margaret? Can you ask Freddie, why don't we delay the meeting for 45 minutes and start at 7:45? And give people a chance to get on? Hasn't people been able to do that?
Can you hear me? McCarthy's on, Paul Van Cott, Wendy, Mike Guerriero, Lenny is on.
Mike's on, I could probably get Lenny.
Lenny is on.
Yes, I am, I'm here. Finally.
I just... Less about this than anybody.
I just sent the invite to Claire.
Freddie?
Yep.
Get the ax, the new meeting code number on our Facebook account, and get people, say we're gonna delay the meeting for 45 minutes? Because I don't think it's fair to the public, that we have 11 participants. And I'm very uncomfortable, conducting this meeting with 11 people.
Hey, Wendy, can you hear me?
Oh, hi. Who called, Paul? Alright, I'm in. Alright, Wendy, I can... Hi, Paul. I love your background. Janso in?
Yes, I sent him a link and I asked him if he could...
Alright, because he's having a hard time getting in.
I know, I, I talked to him once, we'll try...
Holy mackerel.
Andy?
Hey, Wendy? It's Freddie, how are you?
Hi, okay.
I hope you're, I hope you're, everything's going well. Hey, Wendy, the 102, um, agenda you sent at 1:02 PM, is that the most recent?
I believe so, and then I sent you out, like, does this rescind the agenda? But I sent you out an add, like, an addendum to one of the resolutions.
Right, right, so, yeah, I got, I got the, the, the add-on resolution. And what we're gonna say?
The add-on resolution, or the, the adjustment to a resolution?
I got the add-on for Anthony.
Okay, and then we adjusted that late, we're very late, you should have gotten that very late, like, literally like an hour ago.
Right, so which, we're gonna end up at the N after K?
No, it's, it's still there. Let me go through here. It is still, it's still Resolution E. A Resolution E, and then I just adjusted it, so I'm sure you're looking at your agenda?
Yeah.
But I have adjusted the, the dollar amount in Resolution E. I just didn't send the whole agenda back out again, because...
What did you adjust, because it says 4,500 in the agenda?
That's, and that's...
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So the agenda I have is, is adjusted.
You should have gotten that, probably many more.
What do you mean?
All day long, so...
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure the one I'm looking at's the correct. So it's just, it goes from, um, it goes through K. The last thing I have on it is K, is that correct?
Uh, my last reservation is K, yes, that's correct, the, um...
Thank you.
The, um...
Okay, that is last.
Thanks, guys.
Sure.
Hi, Jim. Are we missing anybody?
Well, we're both trying to come in, we're, we'll be ready to go in a couple minutes.
Is... Get in, and, um...
Lenny and Micah?
Yeah, I see, I, I see Sean, and I saw, see Paul Van Cott, Scott McCarthy, Jim... Jim, have au... Jim, do you have audio? Jim?
Before. Can I check my audio? Can you hear me, everyone?
I hear you, Paul.
I hear you, Paul.
Okay, good, good, good. Thank you.
Jim, do you have audio?
I don't have him muted, so... Sean doesn't have audio either, Sean Harvey, so Jim doesn't have it, Sean don't have it. So Sean and I have muted. Let me, Sean. And what about Jimmy, sorry?
And, um, you don't know who those calling users are, so... Yeah.
You need to come and take this call.
Unmute them and test it.
Scott? Hi, Paul?
You know how to record, correct?
Hello? Sean still doesn't have, uh, can't talk, he's, he's muted.
Uh, well, you could go to webex.com. Hit join, and type the following number in.
Is that it?
041. Okay, you're welcome.
Hey, Freddie? What do you think? We just start, delay start, and let's just start at 7:45?
Yep. Just lagging.
This will get people more ample time to get in, I understand it was a mistake.
We're not gonna rush to start.
Right, so what time do you want to start at? Because I, I got a couple of things I want to do, while we're waiting.
Well, I'm not, I, well, it's 25 after now, we should probably go, um, what do you have, who do you have left out there? Margaret?
What? I'm, I'm missing, uh, Adam, Frank, and Rich.
I'm, I'm missing, uh, Adam, Frank, and Rich. I'm missing. They don't have to be on this, it's a regular board meeting, they don't have to be, they're not required to be here. You just need your.
Did Reynolds get in? Margaret, did Mark Reynolds get in? Wendy, did, do you know if Mark got in, because I don't want.
I don't see him, but we're, we're not required.
Yeah, but we're gonna get blasted because.
I have no one to talk to. Don't be kidding me.
Hundred percent.
Guys, so, so can we do a roll call on the town board to make sure the town board is here?
All right, well, we need to make sure we're on.
Obviously.
Okay.
Oh. Sean says he can talk, but nobody can hear him. Row, row.
I don't think he's muted.
Sean, check your phone, maybe that's muted. Margaret, are you?
You have fourteen people on, you have fourteen people on, can I do a, a town board roll call?
You could do that, yes.
They're not answering you.
Bezuto, Winslow, Mizetti.
Yep.
Uh, Akmudi? No, and, and Guerrero. So we're still missing two, okay.
Hello?
That's Sean.
Are you Jimmy?
Can you hear me?
Yes, so you must be calling user number seven.
Yeah, he was hung up and down, I called it again.
Sean, it's Joe Mizetti, how are you doing?
Hey, good, Joe, how are you?
Hey, quick question. Is this meeting legal because we posted it?
I'm sorry, is that again, Joe?
Yeah, we changed the code.
Well, I, I'd say, I may be a little concerned, because if members of the public don't have the code, they really don't have access.
So is this a legal meeting or not, because I'm uncomfortable that three fifty-nine, the code goes out.
Oh, when at three fifty-nine, I didn't see, did it go out at three fifty-nine?
Well, that's when I got it, but where did the public have access to it, when was it posted?
Just went out.
Margaret, when did you make the public aware that the code was changed?
Ten minutes ago, I was aware of the actual, it went out on Facebook.
So Sean, ten minutes ago.
Ten minutes ago? Well, you got it at four o'clock, though?
I got it at three fifty-nine, it says in my email from Margaret.
Actually, just put it on Facebook, Sean, ten minutes ago, the new code.
So is it a legal meeting if we do that or not?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think you justify having a meeting be, you know, what happened to the old code, let me ask you that, why, why did it change?
It glitched.
There was a glitch in the Microsoft.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a glitch in the system, I mean, that, that's the nature of, you know, the, the system that we're working with now, you know, with these COVID meetings, these, these virtual meetings. Um, I, I mean, I think, yeah, you're gonna open yourselves up a little bit to people saying, I wanted to get to the meeting, and then thing went out on Facebook ten minutes ago, that, that's, that's twenty minutes after the meeting was supposed to start.
But we haven't started the meeting.
No, we haven't started the meeting, so I, I, I mean, I, I think we, we could proceed, or, I, I mean, what's your alternative, the alternative is probably, I would suggest reconvening tomorrow, you know, put it, put everything out and, and do it tomorrow.
No, because.
We could do that, we could do that if that's what you recommend, because I'd rather be safe than.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be under, I'm not gonna be able to do it tomorrow, I mean, is there anything pressing that can't look into the workshop?
Yes, the moratorium. You, you have to. I, I think the moratorium will expire if they act tonight.
I think you're correct, Paul.
It expires tonight, Paul?
It expires, uh, tomorrow. End of business tomorrow. So, uh, they need to take action so that they can, uh, resolve to temporarily extend it, uh, until a new moratorium can become effective, uh, with the Secretary of State.
Yeah, I think that is imperative. Like I said, I think if it's a glitch in the system, it's, it's the nature of, of the system we're working with at this point.
Not only that, isn't the, the website for the New York State that it is kind of what it is with these meetings at this point? It, you know, so I, let's just get it done. We can send.
I got the chief's here.
So, Joe, we can send Mark Reynolds a copy of the.
It's just, it's just not Mark, I just want to make sure.
Well, but I, can't we just put the agenda up on the thing, on the website? I, you know, you're going away, so we should just get through it.
No, I agree, I agree, I didn't realize, that's why I asked if there's anything pending. I mean, I just don't want to do anything illegal, as long as Sean tells us it's legal and we're good to go, I'm good to go.
I think there's forgiveness right now, Joe, I do.
I think it, yeah, I think at this point, it's like I said, it's unfortunate, but, but I think there's business that should be addressed.
Oh, Sean, both of you.
What?
Okay, now it's better. You were echoing.
No, I didn't hear what you said, could you repeat? If you give us the green light, I'm good. You're the lawyer.
Yes, I, I said, I, I think at this point, there's, there's business that needs to be addressed, it's unfortunate, uh, that there was a glitch in the system, but, you know, unfortunately, that, that's the world we're living in right now, uh, but, but I, I think with, with pending business that needs to be addressed, I think we need to move forward.
We do, let's go.
Then let's go, let's start, because I think I'm trying to repeat it again.
Is Mike and Lenny both on the call, do we know? Joe?
Mike and Lenny were both on, I think they still, Lenny, are you there?
Is he muted?
Was on.
Len, make sure you're not muted. What about Mike, Joe?
Mic's on.
I don't hear him.
Mike, are you on?
Hear me?
Yeah, now.
Lenny?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can hear everybody.
Oh, let's start.
Got you, Lenny.
I'm here.
Um, Len?
Yes.
Okay, Wendy?
Yes.
We're gonna call a meeting order, um, and have Lenny do the pledge.
Are we ready?
Ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Len.
Thank you.
Wendy, you want to do a roll call?
It looks like if we can start this meeting with roll call, please. Supervisor Bezuto.
Here.
Councilmember Winslow.
I'm here.
Mizetti.
I am here, Wendy, I said unmute myself.
Councilmember Guerrero, Mike, Mike, Mike.
I'm here.
And Akmudi.
Here, I'm here.
Also present, also present are Sean Murphy, Tom Trini.
I'm here.
And Paul, uh, and Rob, are you guys here?
I don't see Rob.
Rob, Rob, Rob won't be joining us tonight.
Hopefully he's on vacation.
Paul.
Uh, not quite.
Okay, good. Thanks. We've got seventeen people online, so obviously there's some other people. So, all right, great.
Okay. Oh, Paul, just walk me through this, we're gonna open the, uh, the, we have an open public hearing on signs, um, if there's any, is there any more comment on signs tonight?
Yeah, Fred, I think, I think it was open at the last, uh, meeting, we're just continuing it tonight.
That's correct, well, we're gonna, we're, 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 we're about to close it. There's no other comment.
You know, I'm wondering if, I'm sorry, but I'm wondering if we might want to consider just extending it to the workshop.
We can do that.
No, Dave Barton is not available tonight.
Okay, I'm thinking, you know, if we could extend the public hearing to the workshop, and then address it at the workshop.
Sean, Sean, why do we want to do that, we had it opened, um, we did receive an email from input, um, we've talked about this for a while, if this is a legal meeting, and we're gonna vote on other things, I, I'm comfortable voting on it.
Okay, I mean, you can, actually, I think the last meeting, people had an opportunity to be heard, uh, people could have submitted, uh, uh, in writing, so, yeah, I certainly, if you want to move forward, you can. Now, you'd have to close the meeting at some point before you adopt, before you consider the resolution.
Well, we can call, we can, actually, we can, we can call for the resolution, we can, do I have a, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Second by Akmudi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So Carrie, that's closed, we, we have a resolution and a little, little bit to get to it, um, the second is on, um, the, uh, the open public hearing on local law D. I need a motion to, um, to open, I need a motion to open this.
Motion.
Is there a second? There, was that a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So Carrie, um, um, Paul, would you get, walk us through this for the next piece for that?
Okay, what the board is taking, uh, having a public hearing on tonight is, uh, local law D of two thousand twenty, which is a temporary three-month moratorium that would only apply to continuing care retirement communities and uses in the highway business district. This moratorium, this temporary moratorium is consistent with the recognition of the Ulster County Planning Board. Uh, it would allow for one three-month extension, it would also provide, uh, the same waiver process that, that was, uh, included in the two thousand and nineteen temporary moratorium.
Paul, quick question, Joe Mizetti. Quick, quick question, since this is a new moratorium into a new area, would it be six months with two, three months, or is it just? Because it's not this moratorium, right?
That, that's correct, that's correct, Joe.
So it should be six months and two threes?
Well, you have the discretion to make it a three-month moratorium, and that's the way, uh, you, you cheated out of the public hearing tonight.
That's, I believe that's, that's.
Yep, and if it, if it is, if you get to the end of that three-month period, and you want to extend it for an additional three months, you could do that by resolution of the board, uh, indicating why it's necessary to, uh, have that.
Yeah, but that's not my question, Paul, because this is a different moratorium entirely, shouldn't it be six months with two, three-month extensions, not a three-month and a three-month?
The same moratorium, they allowed, county allowed us to narrow it.
No. Joe, because we've come out of the moratorium, and we're almost there, so why, why extend it six months?
I understand. This, just so you understand, we're, we're coming off a six-months moratorium, and we're allowed to do through, if need be, the county would allow us to do two, three-month extensions. The, and the only change here is, is that we've narrowed, this, the county allowed us to, they told us we could narrow the scope. We, we could extend it for three months, and we could narrow the scope, and that's what we've done, and we had, we all had that conversation a week ago, uh, with.
And I'm good with the narrowing of the scope, you know, and, and as for the county, I like them suggesting, but I don't need to do anything, as far as I'm concerned, we're Highland, not part of the county, so.
We can do what we want to do.
Just do a super majority and bypass anything they, they, they said, because we do what's best for our community, I know all of you feel the same way.
So Paul, what are we doing next, should we, at this point?
I'm good with the three months, I was just asking.
So Paul, at this point, can we close this and then go to the resolution, when we get, or close it and then wait till we get to the resolution?
No, I, at this point, I think you would want to entertain public comment, uh, in the public hearing, and, and open it up for, I, I can see at least, um, one person who I know is likely going to want to comment, and, and there may be others on the line as well.
Okay, so, so at this point, we're open for public comment on local law D two oh, on twenty twenty. The floor is open.
Hi, um, Alec Glad from Cutty and Fader.
This evening.
Doing well, thank you. So, I'm commenting tonight on behalf of the Views Project, I know the board is familiar with our project, um, but just briefly, the Views is a mixed-use development proposed in the town's recently amended Highway Business District, and consists of forty-four units and fourteen thousand square feet of commercial space. And again, this project is fully zoning compliant under the current zoning, and no variances are necessary, and we are here this evening to provide a brief comment on the proposed moratorium extension. Uh, we submitted a letter earlier today, and what I'm going to cover now is the part of the letter on the moratorium extension. So, the proposed moratorium extension appears to be a continuation of the town's bold attempt to frustrate development in the recently amended Highway Business District in response to generalized anti-development comments from the community, and specifically in response to the zoning compliant application that was submitted by our. This is evidence, we believe, by the fact that the moratorium was adopted on January fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Comprehensive Plan Committee's recommendations for the HBD District were discussed at the November twelfth, twenty nineteen committee meeting, and we frankly have not seen any other committee meeting minutes where changes to the HBD District were discussed, uh, we had submitted a FOIL request on January fifteenth and March seventeenth, twenty twenty, and it's our understanding we received all the Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting minutes in response to the January fifteenth FOIL. Um, and this is because the January fifteen FOIL only showed that the committee met three times, once in November twelfth, twenty nineteen, November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, and the third time on January seventh, twenty twenty. And we were informed the committee had not met on any additional dates on April fourteenth in response to our March seventeenth FOIL. So, the last meeting of the Comprehensive Plan Committee appears to have occurred on January seventh, twenty twenty, before the moratorium's adoption on January fifteenth, and no subsequent meetings of the committee occurred. Uh, it's therefore unclear why the board delayed formal reception and acknowledgement of the committee's report and recommendations until April fifteenth. And no delay was created by the planning board referral, the planning board promptly scheduled and held a special meeting on April twenty-ninth and submitted its limited comments back to the town board. Um, furthermore, the town is also in receipt of the county recommendations dated June third, which were received by the town later that month. Um, but the town has neglected to put this zoning amendment on the agenda, neglected to discuss the county comments, or set a public hearing on this matter. Uh, it's therefore clear to us that the town has continually delayed action during the pendency of the moratorium as a means to further frustrate development, and specifically the Views Project. Uh, the proposed zoning amendments for the HBD District have not changed. Uh, the proposed zoning amendments for the HBD District have not changed since November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Furthermore, the town has had no issue with continuing town business remotely during the pendency of the pandemic. One good example of this is the town board has granted every moratorium variance request submitted, except for the Views, whose property is located in the HBD District, a district with limited amounts of properties, and the applicant is the only property in the district that we're aware, well, aware of with a pending application for development. Uh, the moratorium extension therefore continues to lack a valid public purpose. As we noted in our opposition to the first moratorium, there are very strict legal limits on a municipality's ability to impose a moratorium. And there must be a showing of dire necessity, and the moratorium must be reasonably calculated to alleviate or prevent a crisis condition. And the moratorium and present moratorium extension do not meet this stringent legal test. There is no genuine crisis or emergency. There is no evidence in the record of development pressure on the town or any negative impacts associated with development, nor has the town had challenges conducting public business during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Accordingly, we request that consideration of the moratorium extension should be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Does anybody else would like to speak to this this evening? Seeing none, Paul, I think at this point I want to move to close.
That, that's.
A couple of things, because I, I'm a little, you know, Alec used a couple of words about frustrating development that we think is more from, that's not the case.
Well, that's his, Joe, that's his opinion, and he's entitled to it, and, and that's fine, but let's just, we have, we have a, we have a, we have a resolution that's gonna come. So at this point, we're gonna move to close the public hearing.
Is that any motions?
Second.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. And we'll get to, uh, when we get down there, we'll get the, not now, but we'll get to resolution H, which is with this. So at this point, um, we're gonna go to reports. Um, let me see who's here and who's not here. Do we have, uh, do we have anything? Mike, do you have anything from ECC?
No, next week, they rescheduled their meeting. They rescheduled their meeting for next Monday.
Okay, that's Monday, uh, July?
On Monday.
Okay, on the first.
The twentieth, the twentieth, the thirty, okay. It should be the twentieth.
And thanks, thank you, Mike. Uh, Lenny, anything on EDC?
If, if Charlie's on, he's got it. If not, no, I don't.
Okay. Um, I don't, I don't know if, I'll, Charlie, are you on? I didn't, didn't see you come on. Um, okay, we have nothing on fire. Um, Joe, anything on school?
Yeah, real, real brief, Freddie. Um, they're working on their bus turnaround in the front. Um, it looks like it's coming along. Also, the school's working diligently on, you know, three different plans. One, if they open in its entirety. Two, if they open on a hybrid model, which is kids coming, and some kids staying home and switching back and forth. And also, if, you know, there's no school at all. Unfortunately, right now throughout the state, all of the schools, including the district I'm in, are on hold until the governor finds, makes a decision, which will be sometime in August. So that's all I have to report.
Uh, and, and again, uh, as things change, let us know, even if something happens at the workshop meeting, because I guess every, the whole community's got their eyes on all of the school districts, but thank.
Everybody does, Fred, you know, everybody's heart wants to start. We all want to go back, but unfortunately, we don't have, we can't make that decision until he makes the decision. If I find out, I'll send you guys an email.
Thank you. Lenny, I, I know, I, I know there's, I know there's nothing on seven, uh, but go to light.
Well, the one thing I'd like to say about the lights, if anybody out there is listening, um, if you have a streetlight that's out on your road, please call me, uh, four seven four seven zero five zero. Um, I just, I ride around at night trying to look for streetlights that are out. So if anybody's got any out there that are out, nine one four four seven four seven zero five zero. That's all on the lights.
Hey, Lenny, can I ask you a question? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If you don't have the answer, but I think you do, you know, please get back to me. Um, you know, I want people to understand that when they buy the plaques for the bench or the light poles, that they don't just get made in two seconds. Could you explain the process? Because somebody came up to me and they didn't have their plaque yet, and I tried to explain them, you know, it's, it's.
Okay, listen, that, that, that's no problem. You're not putting me on the spot. Because of the COVID-nineteen, they haven't made any since the last order. All right? They have not made any in the last six or seven months. For whatever reason, the people that actually make those plaques have been shut down. Believe it or not, you asked, I called today, I said, you know, can you give me some idea when they're gonna go back to work? So there, all the ones that are paid for are ordered, but nothing has been made.
Right, and, and, and their spots reserved, they got their spot. I know when I bought my bench for my dad and his memorial, we waited a long time for the plaque, and it wasn't even COVID.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, they're pretty hard to make, actually, but, um, yeah, they haven't made anything. We do have some lights that are still available if somebody wants to sponsor one. Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Lenny.
Moving right along.
We're getting, we're getting feedback from somebody.
Feedback from somebody.
Supervisor? Can I just mention, um, for EDC that they did send in a letter concerning, uh, local law C?
And I believe you sent it out to everybody?
Yes.
Yes, I'll verify, did you get that letter from the EEC and read it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Want to mention it?
Okay, Claire, I know there's, Mike, do you have anything, uh, prior to what's happening?
Yeah, just quick, um, last, the last meeting that they had, which was, uh, you know, the June twenty-fifth. Um, so New Business Park Place, um, went for a site plan amendment. They changed the size, they made it a little smaller. Um, Foreley on Mayor Drive is doing an accessory apartment. And that was received the ZBA, uh, variance for a substandard lot size. Um, Old Business Pedro subdivision, that has to do with the driveway, I think, Scott, right? Um, modifications, recommendation, modifications, board waiting for additional engineering and layout. Public hearings, Imperial, Sal came in front, uh, North Road, between Nine W and North Road, which is right around me, and the art building, I see. Um, and what else? Oh, Torson also came, uh, in front of them for an application, and there is an open public hearing, and then Paul Kusa is also, that's up by, uh, up behind the deli. They're also doing, doing a, uh, new building, and that's it. That's all I got.
Boy, thank you. Um, Lenny, I'm sorry, Jimmy on police?
Jimmy's behind you, yeah.
Here tonight, and so, uh, numerous complaints about bringing parks and kids. So, we now have foot patrol going up there every day, evening and afternoon, walk through the park, talk to staff, show a presence there. Correctify some of the problems that there was, some of the users.
Can we have Jimmy sit closer to the mic, because we can't hear him at all?
Hold on.
Sorry, Jim.
Better?
Not really.
No? It goes like they're not kissing it.
Paul, calm down, Jim.
We've had numerous complaints about burying the reservoir with kids up there acting out of control, a little wild. Um, so, I, I adjust the issue. We've had patrols up there now. We're doing foot patrols on day shift and evening shift when it's open. Through, just talking to staff, they're fucking through the crowds there, just to show more of a presence. So hopefully I'll, I'll take care of some of these issues.
Hey, uh, any other questions for the chief? Lenny on water and sewer?
Um.
Bring us up to date of what we are with, uh, everything?
All right, as far as water and sewer, we haven't had any meetings, but we did put the, um, the bore and the water line to the park out to bid. Dave Roars was low bidder, uh, on the bore and the line installation itself. Uh, at this particular moment, we don't have enough cash to award the installation, but just the, uh, just the bore. I believe later on in this meeting, we are gonna vote on awarding that contract to do the bore. Uh, we met with Dave Roars, and, uh, we're trying to put the rest of the job together, and hopefully we can do that before he pulls out, but he said if he gets the pipes in and he has to leave, he will come back and do the rest of the job with no additional charge for setup and, uh, and, and knocking it down. Uh, that's kind of it as far as the water and sewer goes. Um.
Lenny, can I ask you a quick question? And again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, maybe.
It's okay, Joey, that's okay, Joe.
So, so we got.
I deal well under pressure.
From the person that owns a, a restaurant that now is closed, um, down on the river, requesting to be added to the water and sewer. Was, what's the status of that? Does anybody know?
Well, the status of that is our, the lines that we're doing are going to end, uh, at, right now at the building. To get the additional water and sewer lines from our building to his property line is an additional hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, I think, right now. One of the other bids might have been a hundred and twenty-six thousand. To go from the, uh, Scartados Building down to the end of the park. That's water and sewer on both sides of the road. Um, so it's probably gonna be, you know, up to him to extend that sewer line because, and the water line, because that's what we've done with everybody else that wants to do a project in our town.
Right, I, I agree with that.
And unfortunately, it is definitely a lot of money. I'm sorry?
The water line to the end of our property, though, correct?
Right now, the, the water line is only gonna go to the building and the sewer line to the building.
But, but let me ask you something, if, but if somebody runs a water and sewer line, they have to run it to the end of their property, correct?
Uh, I, I tell you the truth, if I, I would, I would think that that's probably it if it's a developer.
Yeah, because when we did the self-storage and they wanted to extend it.
Right.
They had to run it to the end of their property line. And I don't want it to last for the town that we require the residents to do. If the residents require it to the end of their property, or a developer has to run it to the end of their property, it's not going to be the same.
But.
Well, I, I, okay, I, I mean, I don't exactly know how to answer that, but our property line is on the east side of, uh, River Road. Okay, so technically, the, where the water comes in, it's gonna come across River Road to our building, so we're at the end of our property at that point.
So my understanding is that whenever, whenever a developer or anything needs water, it has to be, they'll have to do the heavy lifting to get it to the hookup. Is that not right? That's what my understanding was.
Right, but they have to run it to the end of the.
Joe, just one, one more, just one more question. One more, one more thing. I think that whenever, if it's, so is Lenny saying it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get it to the restaurant?
No, Claire, it's a hundred and fifty thousand from the, from the building, the property line that adjoins Mariners and our property.
So then what's the.
Which is approximately three hundred and forty feet.
So is there a problem for, for, um, Rich to, to bring it out there? Is that?
No, no problem, no, no problem other, other than all, but we just gotta come up with, he's gonna have to come up with the money if he wants it done right away.
Much money.
I mean, that's, pardon?
And I'm not cutting you off, but just, Claire, so what I'm saying, and I think you and I are in the same place, we're just wording differently. When, when a developer runs a water and sewer line, it's their responsibility to, yes, pay for the entire water and sewer line. But when they run it, they can't just run it to their building. They have to run it past their building to the end of the property line. So for example, we use the property, and I, I hate to use businesses, but I don't know what else to call it. When we did the self-storage extension of the water line, they have run it to the end of their property line, and the reason being is if somebody wants it, they have to run it from that point all the way to the end of their property line, and the whole philosophy is that it keeps extending our water and sewer district, which is a plus.
And the next person can hook up from their property line on south or whatever the direction may be.
So Richie would need, so if he was a developer doing this, he would have to run the property line, the water and sewer line to the end of the property, not to the building, and Richie would therefore connect from that point to his property, but then has to run it to the end of his property line, not just to Mariners, end of the property line. And I'm just saying, if, what I'm just saying is, you know, you lead by example. So if we're saying to developers and to homeowners and everyone else that wants to do this, that has to go to the end of their property line, and we're not following suit, I think that's a poor example, and we need to follow the suit. That's what our code says. That's what we need to do.
But are we not doing?
Well, first, first, first and foremost, we're not developers, okay? So, you know, I mean, if you want to go to other three hundred and forty, fifty, sixty feet, whatever it is on both sides of the road, you come up with a hundred and forty-nine large, and I'll be more than glad to stand there and applaud you.
Well, then, that's, and that was my point, Joe.
I get it, Claire. I'm just saying that, that's, all I'm saying is, if that's our expectation, we should live by the laws and rules that we make, and, and like I said, that's just my statement and my opinion, and you guys can, you know, state and opinion the way you want.
And I, I think at this point, it's, it's still work in progress, so, um, we're, we're gonna, we'll try to keep everybody's interest in mind, but, um, I appreciate it. And I, I do believe that the, the merit, the, the building is almost at the end of the property. I think it goes probably another twenty or thirty feet, but, yeah, that's correct, Joe. It goes to the end of the property line.
Hello, can I, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hey, this is Sean. I, I got moved there. I couldn't, but anyway, uh. Well, let me, I got, because I'm on two lines here. So, I, I agree with, you know, Joey, Joey's right that most times we do have, the developer would have to go. The town doesn't have to, uh, do that if they don't want to, like, as, uh, uh, Lenny said, they're not developers. Um, it's, like, I think Lenny's right. It's your choice. If you want to do it, you know, you could do it, but you don't have to. Uh, what would have to happen at this point, I haven't seen a letter, uh, from the, from the restaurant owner, but he would have to put an application in, uh, for an extension of the water district. He has water, so I'm not sure if he's in the district or not, but I know he has water service there, but he certainly.
No, Sean, the water that he has there is inadequate for the fire suppression system and what they're gonna call for when he does a new building. So he's gonna need that six-inch water line.
Service? Because he has a meter there, right?
I think it's more, Sean, than the water. I think.
Anyway, his water comes from the apartment house.
Okay, so if he, he needs, he certainly needs an extension of the sewer district, he's, since the water district. If the normal procedure is for it to get referred to the water and sewer district, they would make a recommendation, um, and then Richie would have to, uh, uh, submit a map planning report. Most times, the, the town, uh, he would give to the town's engineers, um, uh, Morris associates, whatever they are now. Um, and then they prepare a map planning report, and it would be, it, it, it would be a, a no-cost extension to the town, so all the costs would be borne by the developer. But I haven't seen it, so right now, good.
Well, he did, just so you know, he did submit a letter, because it was emailed to me, and I did read it. Um, Margaret, do you have that letter that Ron Keese sent, by any chance?
Well, I think the first thing, that letter should be referred to the Water and Sewer Committee. Like, uh, Lenny said, we haven't met in a while, but then the Water and Sewer Committee would take a look at it and, and make a recommendation to the town board. That's, that's the normal procedure.
Go on, go on, go on. It's gotta be, in case you're forgetting, he's gotta be rezoned first. We're in the process of getting that set up.
Well, he could, he could ask for an extension of the water and sewer without getting rezoned, that, that, that might prevent the use as a restaurant. So I, I agree that that, that would be a logical, uh, step to do the, uh, rezoning, to, to make sure that goes through before he starts spending money on, on a extension of the Water and Sewer District.
Recollection of the letter was, he has to proceed and build a building. That was what was kind of put, just put that forever on notice what he was trying to do with the property. That was the extent of the letter.
Freddie, it did, it did say he wanted to be added to the Water and Sewer District, because I, it, it stuck with me, that paragraph, because I wanted to know what that meant. It did say that in the letter.
I think going forward, we'll have to have, uh, his attorney, you know, uh, speak to. I think going forward, we'll have to have, uh, his attorney, you know, uh, speak to Sean and, and we can get him, get him going on the right path. Because I think it's everybody's intention to try to make that work down there.
Sean, can you reach out to him because he did send a letter? I just don't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him, uh, and I said, and I, I would suggest if we have it, we, we should refer it to the Water and Sewer Committee, uh, as the first step in the process of, of, of having an extension of the district.
Agreed, I agree.
Okay. All right, let, let me just add this. Along in the bids that we just opened, there was an addendum, which was water and sewer from, water and sewer line, from our building to our property line on the south.
Lenny, 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 you have two speakers on.
I, no, I don't have any speakers on.
We're getting feedback.
I'm sorry.
Maybe we should try to mute ourselves because we're getting feedback.
Okay. Let me try it now?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. And that part of that bid on Roar's estimate was $149,000. Green Meadows was 126,000 to go that last 360 feet or whatever the devil it is on both sides of the road. Okay? Now, unfortunately, w- we are going to be scrambling to get, other than the bore, we have the bore covered with no problem. We're scrambling to try to get the rest of the work done to get the water and sewer line at least that far. We do not have another $149,000. And if the town is going to pay $149,000 to extend that sewer line from where we need it at this present time to the next commercial piece of property, every developer that comes into this town in the future is going to want us to do the same thing for them. Only their water lines, it might be a million too. My rest, my case.
Have Sean, have Sean speak with his attorney. Because now it's, it's all, it could have worked. Okay. Uh, a- anything else? Uh, Mike, anything on zoning? No, no meeting. Okay. Um, is Peter on or is he here? Uh, Lenny, I think you just.
You know, Peter tried to call me. All right, as far as the park goes, the last two benches are in. Uh, I talked to the people at, uh, Sea Lock. Uh, we're not going to get delivery on the additional lights until probably August 21st. Um, everything's kind of laid out where they got to go. So we're just, um, we're just going along on there. Um, the pad is put in for the garbage container. I'm trying to think. We haven't done too awful much, but we got the rocks off the back wall. Um, that's where we're going to put, uh, the Ballard lights down through there. And two more of the tall lights behind those be, the new benches that we just put in. That's kind of it for right at the moment. Oh, no, one thing, we're going to put the other dock in tomorrow.
Good. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Lenny.
Hey, Freddie.
All right.
A- again, I'm not looking to put you on the spot and we're done with all our reports, but can we lay the fire under Morrison Associates or whatever they're called now with this pavilion? We do a design and, and we're still in limbo.
Okay, I will, I will, Mike and I have talked about that and there's been a, and again, they're, they're, they're a couple of weeks ago, they're just going back to work also. So I will reach out to, to Ja, Ray J.
And, and Lenny, you, you, you called me about a pavilion you saw. I forgot the name of the park. We might want to either get some pictures.
Bowden Park in Poughkeepsie. Bowden Park in Poughkeepsie, it's Pavilion Number Six. It is exactly what we had discussed that, that evening, just it's not quite as long. Uh, but it's, it's, you got to go look at it. And I think that that was probably built by the company in Pittsburgh. Because it looks, the construction itself looks like the ones that I looked at in Brevard County, Florida. And that's how I got ahold of those people in Pittsburgh.
And guys, I'm not trying to cause trouble. I, I just, I'm getting a little frustrated with this because this is a great thing for our downtown, especially with COVID right now. If we had that for outside dying, it's an extra for our villages because it's so limited. And, and we're just spinning our wheels and it's not our fault, but we hired this company to do something and yet they've done nothing. And it's getting a little.
They weren't, they, they weren't at work until a couple of weeks ago, they were all on, on pause.
No.
Joe, see, and it, it is, everybody's on pause because even at my work, they're on pause.
I get it, I get it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I spoke to Ray J. at, uh, May 4th and he was going to get back with some plans to show us, but, uh, but he hasn't.
Well, I call that, I.
I am, I am.
I'll ask you, Claire, Mike shouldn't have to keep calling him. If he says he's going to get back to him.
Okay, listen, listen.
And we're paying him a lot of money.
I hear what you.
You can't all talk at once tonight.
I know, but I hear you, Joe, and I, but just, you know, sometimes you just do have to follow up, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
No, no, I hear you, I hear, I hear you.
We'll follow up. Okay, under all business, local law, B 220 zoning, that's going to, we'll, we'll, we'll have that, we'll, we'll discuss that under, um, under discussion when we get the resolution eye.
Okay.
Okay, motions and resolutions. Uh, Wendy?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Are you voting now, Wendy? Are you voting? You say, I like it.
I'm just saying, I'm mute.
We can give you voting rights, I like it.
No, 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 no.
You want voting rights?
No, thank you. Resolution to hire Nicholas Vasas as a part-time police officer at the rate of 2120 per hour, effective July 16th, 2020, at the recommendation of Chief Gaines Chancso.
Jimmy, what's the correct?
Motion.
Jim, how do you say that name?
What's the question?
How do you say that name?
Thanks. Motion. Is there any motions?
I second it.
Is the motion a second of all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the force, officer.
Uh, Freddie, um, one thing, Patty, Polly, Patty, Polly.
I got a, I jumped over privilege of the floor, so that's correct. Well, let's, let's back up to just do privilege of the floor. Patty, are you on?
Uh, I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Just something really quick, um, to kind of dovetail on what Joe Mizetti was saying. As I was walking around town recently and, um, looking at all the restaurants that are trying to open, our downtown right now, I think, is more vibrant than I've seen it in the 22, 23 years since we bought our building down there. And I don't know if this is at all possible, but I was wondering if any consideration could be made that during this COVID crisis, there were a way that may be from Friday at 6:00 PM to Sunday at 6:00 PM, that Vineyard Avenue be closed from Main Street to Milton Avenue to allow the local restaurants to be able to put tables and such out in the street. It, it wouldn't restrict traffic because they would still have Milton and Church and Main and the municipal lot. And it may be, you know, totally pie in the sky, but I just thought I would raise the issue.
Hey, Patty, just, just.
I think Patty said, whoa, wait a minute, I made it clean. You have to all stop walking.
And I speak to it because I'm the one that did the.
I want to have Claire speak to this. I want to have Claire speak to this because we had a meeting, we tried to have a meeting about a month ago with the restaurant owners about something of this nature. And Claire, why don't you do this?
So Patty, I, I hear, I hear you. And actually Lisa Bozy Day and, um, Christina DeMaya both came to me right at the same time and they asked me about it. So we tried to set up a meeting with the restaurants and some of the schedules didn't meet. There was a funeral for, for one guy and, uh, I think Underground, she thought it was another day, I'm not sure, but nobody showed and it was because they were busy and I get it, I'm, I'm not insulted. But the deal is, is that when I asked Sal, who did show, I asked Sal and I asked Eric from, uh, the pizzeria and, you know, they didn't want the downtown closed because what they felt was that then people that were going to do curbside or takeout, they couldn't come downtown, they'd have, they'd be scrambling for parking, so they didn't really want to do it. Then I offered, well, what about Sal's, right next to Sal with the parking lot, could put tables there? And Sal said he has tenants, they park there, not a good idea. Then I said, you know, the other possibility is maybe go out to the field and let people know that they put tables out there, the restaurants can put tables out there. Nobody seemed to want to do that. So we tried to give them an opportunity to, to help them out and to find places that they could put tables because not all of them are as, as we are up here at the wood, that we have all the space, right? And so we felt bad, we wanted to help them. But, you know, that's where, that's where it all was.
Claire, can I just comment real quick? I, I want to really thank you because I think that was outstanding that you organized that and that's really terrific. Um, I did notice some people did put benches on sidewalks. So, so some of them did do that, could you speak about that a little bit?
Well, what I, I don't know about the benches on sidewalks. I know that, um, um, Janet Green of, uh, the Charlie stuff, she put tables out, Sal put two tables out. And we know Vignanettos, he has, uh, space, but they're also allowed to go inside, which I don't recommend as a restaurant owner, but, um, so they do have that opportunity. Um, there's something else that's going to tell you that, that I, I can't think of it, about that downtown. Um, so some of them did put the benches out, they did the six feet, we hope, right? Um, but, you know, we did the best we could to just try to help them out, you know? So.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't remember what I was going to tell you, Patty. It'll come to me.
Okay. Any other comments? If seeing none, uh, Wendy, let's go back to motions and let's do B.
Fred, this is Mark, can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly, Mark, I didn't know you were on, but go right ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on two things. Um, which I had asked of you and I also followed up with Paul Cotton, I got no answer, but I wanted to follow up today. I had asked you about the issue when the board voted to, uh, on the resolution to grant the villages the waiver to move forward. I had asked you the question about the fact that, uh, that there, there are two parcels that seem to pertain to the assisted living, yet six of them were listed on there, which had all to do with the larger project. And I wondered why those larger project, uh, excuse me, those other four parcels were put into that, uh, resolution, which the board voted yes.
Well, to that, Mark, the first part of that conversation, I didn't have the resolution in front of me, but I, I asked you to call or speak to our vandal, and I'm not sure if you did that or not.
I did, I got no answer.
You didn't answer the phone or you didn't get an answer?
Left a, left a message and, and then no call back.
Uh, Paul, would you like to speak to that or do you have any paperwork?
Sure. I, I, I can respond to that either, uh, now or offline. And I'm sorry if I missed your call. Um, but the resolution was, uh, very specific that we were talking about a portion of the property that the villages project had originally applied for. And, and the use that is proposed and for which the waiver was granted has been modified to only be an assisted living facility. And, and the site plan that accompanied the waiver request shows that it is on the lower portion of that property. Uh, but, but in drafting the resolution, we did need to refer to all of the parcels that were made part of the original application. And we were specific that the application only applied to a portion of that overall, uh, project site.
Well, that, that's not what the resolution states. The resolution actually states that the facility proposed, I'm reading from the resolution, the facility proposed for construction on Route 9 W on lands comprised of a portion of the following tax parcels. It's saying it's proposed to be for those following tax parcels. It doesn't say just the two of them. So why were the four others, which have nothing to do with the assisted living, included in the resolution? That's what I'm seeking clarification on.
Okay, well, Mark, let's, uh, do have an offline conversation if you're willing, uh, because I think.
I think, well, at this point, since I got no response from, from the supervisor nor from you before, I think the public.
That's not true, that's not true, Mark. I gave you a response and I had you call the, the attorney. If you didn't call, you can't do that. Well, come on in and get a response from me.
Yeah, okay, Mark.
Let me just be clear then. I think the public would need to know reasoning.
And I, I would be, I would be glad to have an offline conversation with you about that. I have no record or have no recollection of having received a call from you. And I do check my voicemail. I, I, I may have missed it, I'm not sure when it came in, but, um, I would, I would be glad to have a conversation with you offline. And, um, yeah, you can, uh, hopefully we can, uh, clear this up.
Okay. I'm interested in that question too, Paul, because, you know, I, I don't understand why that was included. But, you know, since we're on the topic, I, I'm a little perplexed by that meeting because you were, your law firm, and since you're a lawyer for that firm, you represent them, you work for the town, correct?
That's very correct, yes.
But what I'm perplexed about is at that meeting, Mr. Stout actually gave proposal for the development, not Mr. First. Why wouldn't Mr. First give the proposal instead of, why did your law firm do that? I don't, I don't get it. First should have given the proposal, not you, because you work for us. And it almost seemed like, uh, to be, I'll be honest with you, something didn't smell right. Why is the town's attorneys, and, and are you charging us for that proposal? Because I, I hope I'm not going to see a bill for Stout getting that proposal when First should have given it. So the two part is, one, why did you give the proposal and not First? And number two, are we being charged for Stout's proposal?
Okay.
As a developer, not us.
Let's, let's be absolutely 100% clear about this. We are the town's Lloyd's attorneys. You are our client. We only are advocating or, uh, representing the town's interests. To the extent that, uh, Mr. Stout, uh, provided any information regarding a proposal, it was, um, and, and I don't recall exactly the circumstance that you're talking about, but that would have been just explanatory, uh, for the board, not as any type of an advocate for the proposal. So, um, please, uh, please, uh, Councilman Mizetti, uh, rest assured that we are 100% supportive of the town's interests and only looking out for the town's interests as we take every step we'll have to, uh, do. It's, it's, it's all for the town.
Fred, I have one last question.
And I think you've done a fine job.
I'm out on that one, Paul. I like you as a person, but I'm not so sure, you know, to me, sometimes it appears you guys are mediators and, and not looking out for our best interest. I'll be honest with you, you sent an email about it.
And as liaisons, I feel that they represent us quite well. And I think that you get asked the planning, I think they'd agree.
What's that, what's next? Mark, did you have another question?
Supervisor. One more thing.
One second, one second. Mark, did you have a second question?
Yes, at the last meeting, at the last meeting, Fred, you spoke about the fact that you, that you had forwarded Crystal Hammond's complaint to the attorney and that you would have some response to that, uh, process this meeting?
That's correct, that's correct.
I just wanted to know what the re, uh, resolution ultimately was on that.
The resolution?
What resolution?
Since that's a personnel matter, you'll have to have a conversation with the, as a personnel.
Because I can, I can be on Facebook and have a conversation with somebody and if somebody chimes in and doesn't like it, it's personal. Guys, sorry, but you're trying to put, Mark, get the whole rag paper here, that's still serious?
Enough, enough tonight. There were.
Right, now I have, I have something to say. Okay, so, the other reason, the other reason, sorry, Wendy, one more thing. The other reason that we can't shut the downtown down and act, and actually Wendy asked the question.
And actually Wendy asked the question.
Is because of the, we have to have police presence and we don't, we can't let the police into the town because of the safety issue. And I think if you have a. And I think if you have a question on that, Jimmy, he wasn't answered. Happened after nine 11. So that's other reason we couldn't shut the town.
That being said, B.
Okay, I'm sorry, Supervisor, um, we have a, a question on the privilege or from Alex.
Yes. Hi, um, I just, I just have a quick question about the meeting connectivity issue because I tried using the link and call in number on the, uh, town's website that was posted. And I know I missed the start of the meeting because of this. Luckily, I was able to get ahold of Rob Stout, who was able to give me the new meeting number, but I was just looking for some clarification on that. Because I can only hazard to guess some other members of the public and other interested people, uh, would have likewise had trouble getting on.
Okay. Go Wendy, go to B.
B.
Yeah, resolution.
B.
Okay, resolution B. Motion designate the following two council members, Claire Winslow and Mike Rera, to as signatories for the vouchers from July 1st through December 31st.
Mizetti motion.
Motion.
There's a motion. Do I have a second?
I just need five, five eyes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Already done in, uh, at the reorg. Motion to approve the minutes. Um, we're way behind because these meetings are way too long, uh, from May 20th.
No.
Motion June 3rd and June 17th.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution to authorize famous vouchers as audited by the audit committee. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Aye. Second it. Both me and.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Freddie, just a quick question. Yes, Joe. I, I, I heard that the locks have been changed at the town hall. They're in the process, they're in the process of being changed now. When will we be receiving our new keys? Because I don't want. You're going to be, you're going to be, you're going to be issued, you're going to be issued a code. A code? And how much does this cost?
Eight million dollars.
You want to, you want to have that? Resolution. I don't recall a resolution to change the locks. There wasn't, there wasn't a resolution. It came out of, it came out of budget for the building. It's already, but I have budgeted money for the building to get out of. So, so it's in the budget from, when we adopted a budget? I have, I have money in the budget to, I have money in the budget to repair the building. So it came out of that money? That's correct. And how much was it? Call me tomorrow and I'll get the numbers for you. Well, you're in your office. There's, why can't you have Margaret get us the number now? Call me, listen, call me tomorrow. She and I'll get the numbers for you or email me.
Secretary.
Okay. But it's not a problem. Go ahead. Hey Freddie, one little quick question while we're on. Money?
Here we go. This is why.
I, I'm, I'm just sorry because I am out for the taxpayers' dollars. I'm understanding that we have a company, Clearwater, now cleaning the town hall. Is that correct? That's not correct. They come in, they come in occasionally and sanitize the building. And how many times have they come in? I think three, since it's, since the COVID has begun. And when are they scheduled to come again? They're not scheduled. Okay. So it's based on COVID. And do we know the cost? Because I asked about the cost and I still have not gotten the numbers. Listen, have time, feel free to come down here and sit down with us or Margaret and we'll get all those numbers. I, I shouldn't have to come down. No, you're expensive. Paid a salary.
Slating the vouchers.
Oh, my goodness.
We will dig the vouchers out.
That, the.
And, and again, I'm, I'm concerned.
Are we moving along here?
Excuse me. No, we're not. Excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, and I'm concerned because I've gotten comments that were in the black. I've gotten comments that the budget's looking good, we're in great shape from your secretary, but I haven't seen any numbers verified. You get a supervisor's report. Every month and the one you'll, you'll be emailed, the one this month is just out. Every month, there's a supervisor's report and it's also a report and it shows you where we are for the year and where we are year to date and what the prison has been spent. It's very clear. I, I have my emails open and I don't see any supervisor's report. Why should I be expecting this report? Have you received any back from the bookkeeper? She puts it out every month. I'm not sure why you're not getting it. We'll make sure tomorrow, 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 tomorrow. Tomorrow, well, when you're, maybe when you're here, you could ask for it. Tomorrow I will have it emailed out to you. Thank you. I, I do ask you for stuff, Fred, and my phone calls and emails go unanswered. So, so it's not that I'm not asking. Right. Eight hours a day I'm here.
Delta, D, D, D.
Resolution A, please.
Yes.
Motion.
To authorize Anthony Jean Grosso, Deputy Building Inspector, to manage and coordinate the town's stormwater management program, prepare and file the annual MS4 report at an annual salary of four thousand five hundred dollars per year at the recommendation of the town board effective immediately.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
It was just, I just want to add to the resolution, uh, Wendy just put as budgeted.
Right.
And discussion.
Discussion.
So I just want to say that I think it's awful. That a person.
That a person.
Budgeting for a person's good job. And they did the job and waited so long to receive their money. I think that's atrocious. And that's all I want to say. This is ridiculous that this person had to wait this long to get the money that we budgeted for and promised them to do the job, to almost have to beg for the money that they were to receive. I, I think this is ridiculous. Listen, you were in the majority for two, for over two, uh, at one point, you had three votes to do it with.
Okay, let's, let's vote on this one and move on.
Resolution A.
We, we didn't vote on E yet. You have to vote on E, Wendy.
Motion.
We need a vote on E.
We're, we're ready to vote.
Stop talking. We talk.
Resolution E.
Resolution. We have. Winslow and Offmody.
Winslow and Offmody.
Pizzuto.
Is the resolution E for motion?
Motion E. Is there a motion?
So it was motion by Winslow and. We have to vote. Then all in favor?
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? So carried.
So carried.
Not sure where we're getting. That's an awful, that's an awful echo. Right?
Right. Probably the system tonight.
System tonight.
It, it could be that somebody's seen by someone or they're both on. That's what's causing echoes. Two people are together. That's what's causing the echo.
That's what's causing the echo.
So Fred, if you have three people in your office, they're all on. That's, that could be it. And Fred, who, I saw Russ sitting. Could you look at Russ's positions? I'm hearing rumors about Russ. What are you talking about, Joe? I heard that he's the new deputy supervisor. Is that correct?
No, it's not.
Did he talk, did Joe call you? Did you, did you tweet, did you call him, Joe? I, I, I heard that he was sworn in. Is that correct? Did you call him? I'm asking if he's the new deputy supervisor. I asked you a question. Did you call him and congratulate? I called and I heard it. I heard, I heard it and he said, and he was sworn in, but yet you've yet made an official announcement. Why?
Because he doesn't have to, Joe.
My appointment, Joe. Supervisor is in chain of command and he's not there.
And it's his prerogative.
To call him and congratulate him. So I think that says it.
Jesus. Enough, Joe. Let's get through this.
Why haven't you introduced him as? Joe, Joe, we're going to mute you in a minute. Let me have a resolution. Last time Claire said you were going to mute her, she said she was a councilman and you couldn't mute her. So now I'm asking you to cuss and I'm not being, you don't want to answer. So you're threatening to mute me, Fred? Are you going to stop? Just stop it. Let me have J. So you're refusing to answer who that Russ is your official deputy supervisor? Is that correct?
Resolution.
I refuse to answer anything.
Resolution over him. That's it. Enough is enough with his nonsense.
I thought I was speaking to Fred.
What's your point? What's your point?
Talking to everybody at this point. Let me have resolution B.
We can't get into the nitty gritty. Where was my?
Rail Trail Association, the rules to walk, travel fast along the Hudson Valley Rail Trail at 75 Havlin Road, including 75 Havlin Road parking lot and 100 Havlin Road parking lot on Saturday, October 3rd and Sunday, October 4th at the request of the President of the HVRTA. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Second it.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, well, I'm going to go to you on resolution. You want to speak to us about local law C? Is it C or G, Fred?
C.
It's local law C. Resolution.
Resolution G is local law C.
Thank you. Paul, would you like to talk to us on that?
I think, um, Start would be better prepared to speak to that.
Are you there?
Okay. No, he left. He was like, he's out to dinner.
Just got, we had to, had a discussion on, we had a discussion amongst the board, uh, with, um, um, uh, on local law. We talked about local law C. The, because of everything that's happening at the moment with pandemic and everything else that we're facing, including now union contracts that are up. The discussion was to, um, move it for another 10 years. Time can deal with this when it's time or when they want to, but at the moment, um, the resolution speaks to the sign laws. It's still, but no new signs. You can't repair the old signs and electronic signs. Mizetti motions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So carried.
Hey, Paul, now you're up.
Hey, Paul, now you're up.
Okay.
This is resolution.
This is resolution.
Local law D.
Local law D.
Right. And, and this resolution would do two things. One, it would adopt the 2020 temporary moratorium law, which would provide for a narrow, uh, moratorium that only applies to continuing care retirement communities that's used in the highway business district. The moratorium would extend for an initial period of three months and which could be, further extended by the town board by resolution for an additional three months. If you wanted to do anything after that, you would have to, uh, adopt a, a new local law, just as you, uh, would be doing tonight. Were brought up, uh, during, uh, the public hearing. We, my law firm participated along with the, uh, comprehensive plan committee, uh, for, uh, a series of meetings throughout the winter until the, the COVID, uh, crisis put New York on pause. And during those meetings, uh, we discussed the proposed amendments, uh, that are in, um, local law P of 2020. And, and those, uh, amendments, those draft amendments were proposed in furtherance of the 2019 temporary, temporary moratorium law, which was an enact, was enacted to basically preserve the status quo in the town while the town went through what it considered to be an urgent, uh, exercise of looking at its, uh, comprehensive plan and looking at its zoning code to see what changes, uh, ought to be made. The town, uh, worked through that process over the course of, um, the winter, since the original moratorium was adopted in January. As I said, uh, the committee worked hard and came up with recommendations. They referred those to the town board. They were, those, uh, recommendations then in turn, uh, referred to the planning board. Uh, the planning board made its recommendations back and the town board had in Ulster County for recommendations. Those recommendations came back from the county on June 30th. And, and really, so the town has been very diligent in working through, uh, the, the process of trying to amend, uh, its zoning code. And, uh, due to the, the, uh, some of the culties running during the COVID time and, and also just to make sure that, um, the town has sufficient time to consider the Ulster County comments and to decide, uh, what action, if any, it wants to take. The, the, uh, town board on July 1st, uh, agreed to send the 2020 moratorium law to a public hearing tonight. That public hearing has been held and, and, and closed. And at this point, this resolution would be to adopt that temp, that 2020 temporary moratorium law that is of a reduced scope. The other thing that it would do, and, and this again is made necessary by, uh, both the, the COVID pandemic and also the, the, uh, you know, basically the press of time. The, the, as I mentioned earlier, the 2019 moratorium law will expire as of tomorrow, July 16th. What we have found is that the Secretary of State's office, where they accept the filings of local laws, is not conducting in-person business. They're actually just a couple of floors down from our office in Albany. And so there's going to be a several day delay before the law can be actually filed, accepted filing by the Secretary of State. Will only be at that point that new. In between until the law is actually filed. It would continue the existing moratorium, um, and then would automatically expire, um, when the new moratorium becomes. But it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach, but it just makes sure that the town is protected in terms of its goals, um, to continue the moratorium with reduced, with the reduced scope.
Anybody have any question for Paul? Anybody have any question for Paul on this? So do I have a motion on the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Motion, did it, who motioned second?
Lenny motion by Lenny. So I'm, Lenny, is there?
Motion by Lenny, is there a second?
Second, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so carried.
No opposed, so carried. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now to skip over from, from all business B, this is resolution, um, resolution I. This is, this, this talks to the letter that we got back from the county on the zoning amendment. Um, as we all know, it's a comprehensive plan and it went to the planning board and the planning board turned it around and around and they sent it to us as a recommendation. At this point, when I read through what the county has, the county comment and what they're looking for, um, my, uh, my, my best is to send it back to the planning board, let them deal with it and then send it back to us as a referral.
Great idea.
Yeah, I, I have a question. I, I just want to thank all of us because I thought we did a really great job, um, being collaborative. The, the planning board worked diligently on this proposal. The board worked diligently. We all worked together making the plan that we sent. Um, I'm a little disturbed by the county's comment because we're a new regime. Therefore, of course, with a prior goal that was in favor of certain aspects, we as a board want to take back our community. So of course it's gonna conflict an old plan made by a board prior to us. So I'm concerned about what I say about the comprehensive plan because as we move forward, we'll be changing a lot of things. So, you know, I, I think we need to take that into consideration as we make any adjustments because the reality is we have the right to put the plan back to the board that Ms. Winslow, I, you, Fred had input and we all voted together to send that plan forward. No one at any time rejected or voted no when we put the proposal to send it forward. So we do have the right to vote on it in super majority. And again, the county doesn't live here. We do. We are elected officials that represent the taxpayers and the community members. And we need to act in the best interest of them. That's what I'm saying.
So this resolution is to send it back to the planning board?
I, I, I believe that we should vote on the resolution as we put it first, you know.
The resolution, the resolution as it stands.
The resolution.
Back to the planning board.
Let's vote.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to send it back to the planning board. I motion.
Okay, I'm gonna say second, but I want a little clarification here. You got that?
Yep.
So we are voting on to send what the county sent us back to the planning board. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, fine. Okay, I made the second. Go ahead.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mizetti's a no.
All opposed?
Mizetti, no.
Okay, I'm gonna do a.
Guerrero, no.
Of course.
Roll call, please.
I'm gonna do a roll call. All right.
Have these little comments.
Pizzuto, Winslow?
Aye.
Yes.
Mizetti?
No. And again, I'm gonna state the reason I'm a no is because all of us had input on this plan and we all voted to push the plan and no one voted no on it.
Now this is a vote, please.
We're not voting on our claim.
This is not a discussion right now. This is a vote.
I can, I can make my opinion with my vote. I'm voting that way. I have that right, Mr. Pizzuto. And I'm exercising my.
This is not an opinion. This is a vote.
And I voted and I explained my vote.
Mike Guerrero?
Understand, Mr. Pizzuto, why you're calling me and there's little comments being made. You're not calling those out. Could you please clarify why you're not making snide, unprofessional remarks?
Stop tonight, finally. Your mouth has been running all night, Joe. Somehow you can't control it.
Pizzuto, I don't understand why you're about being professional right now.
Well, I'm listening to you.
Well, I'm being polite. I don't understand why you're being polite.
I've gotten to Guerrero.
You're still.
Did you, did you hear me, Wendy?
I did, Mike. Got a lot of feedback.
I, I was a no, Wendy.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Ross Moody?
You're welcome, Wendy.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So three, two. Can we go on to the next one? Resolution.
Resolution J. Lenny, you want to, let us both this. This is on the, um, this is on the successful bid for the board. Eighty-seven thousand dollars and it goes to Roars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Mizetti's second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, last one. In case the Peter Brooks and Fox are donating a parcel of land to the town of Willow Dock Road.
Motion. Is there a motion?
Mizetti motions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alamoody, all in favor?
This, discussion.
Aye.
I said discussion.
The talk.
Okay.
I just want to thank Peter Brooks for his generous donation. It's a great asset to the town and thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
Any other discussing? Wendy, Paul?
No. Roll call, uh, Pizzuto?
Yes.
Winslow? Yes. Wins, Mizetti?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Lenny?
So carried.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. All right, motion.
And I'd like to thank everybody for a very wonderful evening.
That makes Lenny. Motion to adjourn?
Lenny, take a second, please.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, God. Ballos in favor? Aye.
So carried.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, we're closed.
Thank you. Everybody be safe going home. Oh, you are home.
Good night, everyone. Good night.